The scope of duties that a school board member performs is wide ranging, from making decisions about curriculum to creating and upholding board policies to managing fiscal responsibilities.
The way that these responsibilities are prioritized could determine the academic success and achievement for Collier County.
The members of the school board have the ability to influence the quality of education and impact the lives of students within their county.
A candidate's morals and stance on pressing issues can determine what changes are going to be made if they are elected to the school board.
Candidates that have held other positions of leadership or have been involved in the community have their accomplishments to speak for them. Each candidate has also published their own websites to share their bios, individual platforms, and ideas.
In an effort to help facilitate Collier County voters making informed decisions, The Wave has conducted interviews with the school board candidates discussing their goals for their term on the board, as well as new things they may bring to the table.
The candidates were asked a standard set of questions ranging from their background, philosophy of education, and budgeting. Follow-up questions are only based on whether a member of the editorial board has a need for clarification.
In the interests of non-bias and non-partisanship, the editorial board at The Wave has decided to present the raw, unedited interviews of each Collier County School Board candidate on our website. The candidates were made aware of this in our invitation to them.
Elections have consequences and voting is your right. If you are not 18, your voice can still be heard. Engage with your family and your neighbors.
I'm familiar with what the school used to look like because I've been here previously. This is amazing.
Thank you.
So what are your names?
I'm Maddie, I'm the managing editor, but we'll clarify that later when we start the interview. But we're all seniors, they're juniors. This is the editorial board.
Excellent. Yeah, this is impressive. They gave me a copy of this. Because this is a real paper. Most schools are not doing this. This is amazing.
Yes, we're really proud of that.
Read it on your resume, too.
So that's, yes, right over there.
You gotta log through as well.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
You okay, Al? You want a water?
Al, my, you want my water out here?
I'm getting her water.
I brought the water.
Yeah, just make sure she gets her question, but I won't worry about it.
The bell's gonna go off.
Should we wait for it? We have a long wait.
They do wait in during the past year. Good, that's good. That's great. So how many, how many of you have been on the island your whole life?
Pretty much.
Fantastic. I was telling them that I grew up coming here, I've been here 25 years now in Naples, but I grew up coming here in the seventies when there was nothing on the beach. So my grandparents lived in Aquarius, cute little condos next to, I think there's a pizza place now, but it used to be 7-Eleven. And like the highlight of our day was walking into 7-Eleven to get Big Ops. I'm not even kidding. There were two restaurants you either ate at, the Snook Inn or the Jolly Roger. You probably don't remember the Jolly Roger, this is like early seventies. It's just amazing how much the island has changed. And I love coming down here because it's, it's like you feel like you're a world away from Naples. You feel like you're in the Caribbean. You could be, you know, hours away and you're really only driven.
Yeah, it's a very different vibe down here. I like it.
For sure.
Sometimes I wish I lived down here, but then other times I'm like, hmm.
It's just not cold.
Expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah. We get days like today and it's like, I don't want to be inside. I don't want to be outside.
Perfect, right? It's scorching heat. Yeah, I do worry about my kids being able, I have four, I'm worried about them being able to afford to come back and live in Collier County. I'm on the Affordable Housing Committee for Collier County. And it's just a challenge, no doubt about it. They give you good music, too. Stones, awesome, okay. Whoever's in charge of the music, I like that.
It's juicy. I think all the other ones are good.
That's great.
It's like three minutes, right?
I thought it was like four?
Is it four?
I think it's four. It feels like four.
Sometimes it feels longer than that.
Four is reasonable. I'll tell you, the Gulf Coast is huge. They have like 2,600 kids right now. Way overcrowded. You know what building you might school up in North Naples, I don't know if you know that? And they get like three minutes and finally jumped it to four because it's like, I mean, yes, it's a huge place, you can't stop reasonable.
Yeah, because we always have leftover time.
Yeah, that's good. You'd rather have that, yeah. And I'm sure the teachers appreciate it because starting, you know, when kids are still flying in and you're trying to start your lessons. So yeah, did everybody fare okay in the storm? Did everybody do okay? I feel very fortunate after the season and what's gone on. I was telling Al, a friend of mine, her son, I think this might be his first year here, maybe he came here last year because Zachary Benaros. So he, he had been at Laila and he's here now and he, he was, she was nervous wrecked because he was going to play football. And of course, he broke.
Yeah.
He broke his wrist. But apparently a lot of kids were hurt that game. Very poor sportsmanship on the part of the other team, apparently.
We haven't been able to play one for a while.
Our football season stopped.
That's such a shame. Such a shame.
We did have a flag football game last Friday that he played in.
Good, so that's why, okay, good. He loves it here.
I'm glad, I went to, we went to the school gym, so I'm glad, I'm glad he came back. I know his brother was coming.
I think so?
Yeah.
Stuff for so long.
Yes, it does.
So now who all prepared, do you all prepare questions?
We work together.
We all worked together and then came up with the master list.
So now like the adults in the community aren't even doing this. The Naples Daily News really hasn't done this. This is really impressive.
Thank you.
Beyond impressive.
Thank you. It's been a really great experience for us. It's very weak and it's very eye-opening.
I bet, I bet. And you all are getting to the point where, you know, politics is everywhere, right? You see it on TV, you see it, you drive down the street, you see signs. You know, they used to say, don't discuss religion and politics, but I think it's important to do discuss those things because how else do you learn? Otherwise you're in a echo chamber right there.
Exactly.
John doesn't come today.
There's a kid who will come and play basketball and he's just very loud.
Well, that echoes. And these are impact windows.
It's beautiful, so.
Yeah.
Beautiful. So will you have, will you plan a fall production? Will you be having a fall production, do you think?
We don't typically do fall productions.
Spring, okay, okay, good.
Yeah, because it's just too much for
We're kind of like down to the ceiling.
Yeah, it is difficult. Kids are just getting into the program and then to have to
Incoming freshmen, stuff like that, kind of get the vibe for it first.
I know Gulf Coast has an amazing, beautiful town though.
They do, they do, their sponsor is someone who does Naples players. So she has history doing, you know what I mean? That's how she's been able to build it like this.
Okay.
There we go.
All right, am I ready? Don't be. Alright, so I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you again for coming here. We truly appreciate you taking the time to be with us. The purpose of these interviews is to inform voters and stakeholders on the importance of the role of the school board in Collier County and education and to increase student involvement in education. To begin, we'd like to introduce ourselves as the editorial board and then we will proceed with the interview. So my name's Jorge Rodriguez, I'm the editor-in-chief.
I'm Sophia Laurin, I'm the executive editor.
I'm Madison Moore, I'm the managing editor.
I'm Helena Davis and I'm the opinions editor.
I'm Annabelle Fraser, I'm the futures editor.
I'm Al Horchison, I'm the science editor.
I'm Grant Terrell, I'm the web design editor.
I'm Logan Rennell, I'm the digital media editor.
Nice to meet you.
And first, we'd like to begin by discussing any background that you may have. So is there any background experience that you have that qualifies you to become a school board member?
Sure. So I am a local realtor, mother of four children. I've lived in Naples for 25 years, but I was born and raised in Lockton, Indiana. And I graduated from Purdue University with my degree in education. And I moved back here to start a family, which I did. And I spent 16, 17 years staying home to take care of my kids. And there was a lot of, a lot of dysfunction on the previous board, a lot of quarreling and not really trying to work together to solve problems. And so because I have four kids in the schools, I thought it was important to, instead of just complain about it, roll up my sleeves and get to work. And I was fortunate to be elected in 2018.
We've reviewed your campaign materials. Could you tell us what best describes what you hope to accomplish on the board?
So I would say many things. One of the things that I'm really passionate about is, and our governor's passionate about, is that he wants to lead the nation as a state, he wants to lead the nation in career and technical education by the year 2030. And we're well on our way here in Florida to doing that. We know that about 30% of kids do not go to college when they graduate from high school. So we feel it's incumbent on us as a board to provide a pathway so that when you cross the stage, when you graduate, you're onto a career, not just bouncing from job to job. So certainly expanding career and technical education is a big piece of that. I also have a passion for literacy. I think in the district, we need to teach like our hair's on fire around reading skills and attaining reading proficiency. Right now, Collier County Public Schools is top five district in the state. Florida is fourth and sixth in reading and math nationally, so we're doing well. There's more work to do. And I think, you know, up to third grade, you're learning to read, but after third grade, you're reading to learn. So if those kids cannot read proficiently by third grade, they're really at a disadvantage going forward. So I would say that, and then of course, maintaining a strict, maintaining strict oversight of the budget. We're on track to be debt-free. We're the only district that's going to be debt-free by 2026. We're paying cash for the new high school in North Collier area to save taxpayers $41 million in interest payments. So fiscally, I think it's important that we continue to keep our eye on the budget. And so those are really my top three things. I would also add in there, we have got to get creative about attracting and retaining great teachers. Because as we discussed off-camera, you know, it's expensive to live here. And so they need to earn a living wage, but we also have to get creative in terms of what's their work-life balance like? Are we putting too many things on their plate that have nothing to do with the core content of science, math, and reading, those types of things?
Thank you. Is there specific reason that you're running for seat or reelection on the school board?
Yes, so I would say entirely due to my passion for education and furthering opportunities for students here in Collier. But in addition to that, I would say I'm very concerned about the fact that COVID interrupted a lot of what we were trying to do for about two years. Now, we were still able to make gains during that time. In fact, our test scores came back, we had done better than we'd ever done. We outperformed the state in all 21 tested areas for the first time ever. And we've done that two years in a row. So I would say that even though we did well coming out of COVID, we still, in the areas of math and reading proficiency, there's still work to do. We still want to figure out what's the secret sauce to get teachers to come here and get them to stay here. One of the things that I've started that I really am passionate about, I mentioned I'm on the Affordable Housing Committee for Collier County. We have a 35-acre parcel that we've owned for 50 years. It's sat there. Wouldn't it be great if we could put some type of housing for our teaching staff, for EMS and fire, the sheriff's department? Because so many of our frontline workers, really, it's getting more and more difficult for them to live here. So that's sort of a passion project. We've got the ball moving. We just put out a request for information at a recent board meeting, so I really want to get that across the finish line because I think that's going to be important.
Are there any previous accomplishments of the board that you would plan to build upon or further, or make further contributions to?
So I would, I would say certainly to the point about student achievement, you know, continuing to, you know, it's a fine line too because there's so much of a focus on testing. And I worry about what that means for students in terms of taking them away from its real instructional time. But the fact is, the state grades us on our testing, so you know, it's a game that you have to play, right? And so we have to follow the rules. And so I think increasing student achievement is something that we are very, very proud of. As I mentioned, the last two years, we have outperformed the state on every one of the 21 tested areas. That includes, you know, your FSAs, your EOCs, all of those. And so very proud of the test results that we've been getting. Very proud of the fact that we have raised our graduation rate consistently every year. 92.7% is our most recent graduation rate. When you keep in mind that 55% of our students go home to households where English isn't spoken, 65% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch, that's a really, that says so much about the work that our teachers and school staff and our students and families are doing. So very proud of all that work and just hope to be able to continue. Because again, it's really about outcomes for students. And so that's what I'm passionate about.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you. So now that we've established your background, we're going to shift our attention towards schools. So in the last five years, there have been two major hurricanes and a pandemic. So how would you support the students and staff in the event of such a crisis?
So I will say much like what we have done. One of the things that happened during COVID, we were on spring break, right? Remember that? We were, in fact, we were at Disney when Disney shut down. And, and so we quit, we had two weeks to pivot, get 3,200 teachers trained on Canvas, and get our kids back to school online, right? So during that time, we were, in two weeks' time, we were able to train our teachers, get everything loaded into our online platform so that we could continue forward momentum for our students. During that time, we served over a million meals in the community because anyone under the age of 18, whether you went to public school, private school, didn't matter, anyone under the age of 18 qualified for free meals. So Collier County Public Schools sent buses and lunch ladies to deliver food to those who needed it. So very, very pleased with our response there. Because not only did we continue to educate our students, we continued to feed our students. In the wake of Ian, what we've seen, and I actually saw an awesome, Your Key Club did a collection, a huge collection for St. Matthew's House. We've been able to kind of rally around and do a similar thing in our schools. And what's happened is the schools in North Naples who were not hit and affected, impacted by the hurricane, they have really been focused on collecting items, gift cards, things like that. And what they've done is distributed those items to the schools that were impacted for their families to come through and sort of shop, if you will. Things like mattresses, sheets, clothes, food, you name it. And so I think when you, when you look at the system as a whole, you know, those who have helping, those who have not in time of need is something I'm very proud of. And so to your point, that's how we have responded and I'm pleased to see that's how you responded as well.
Thank you.
Please describe what you believe a perfect school would look like.
Okay, so I think, obviously, in my view, it's really about the students. Are the students happy to be there? Are they engaged? When you peek into a classroom, are they engaged in their learning? Were they sitting, you know, scrolling through their phone, tapping their pencils, you know, that type of thing? Because that's the most important thing. And I think MIA is actually proof that it's really not about the building, it's about the people in it, right? Because you were in Portables for many, many years. And so, you know, it's great to have nice facilities, right? This is amazing, you know, we have some amazing schools around Collier County. But it's really about student engagement. What's the relationship like between the staff and the students? Are the teachers excited to be there and inspiring to their students? Or are they, you know, punching a clock and, you know, it's a means to an end, which is their paycheck? So to me, it's really about the vibrancy of what's going on in the building, you know, not necessarily the building itself.
Awesome.
So we talked a little bit earlier about how high school students are starting to get to the age where topics like politics are all around us and we notice them everywhere. Which leads me to the question, how do you feel schools should approach these controversial topics like religion or politics?
So this is what I will say. What I have learned is that there are so many in the community that believe that it shouldn't be discussed at all. There's a mistrust of people, of educators right now. And I think it's a shame because I think we should give them the benefit of the doubt that they're perfectly capable of leading discussions without leading students down a path, right? Socratic seminars are a perfect example of having these high-level conversations where you may have a different point of view than I do, but we both are free to express those. And hopefully the takeaway is I learned from you and you learned from me. So it's a fine line. I trust our teachers on the whole to do just that and to balance those conversations to make sure that both sides of an issue are heard. But I think there's a large level of distrust right now and it's a shame. And I think frankly, I think a lot of teachers are leaving their profession for that reason. They feel like they're being blamed for everything. And I think it does a disservice because I think we can trust our teachers, I think we can trust our students to handle those types of conversations, right? So, and I was looking through here, there's some really hard-hitting stuff in here. So you're proof that those conversations can happen, so.
How would you advocate to ensure that children aren't forced into a one-size-fits-all learning model?
So I would say, as an example, this board, during my time on the board, we've approved two new charter schools. Because I think, and especially if you weren't paying attention before, the pandemic certainly opened your eyes to the fact that not all kids learn the same. Right? We all have different learning styles. And so what works for one family may not work for another family. And so I think it's just important to make sure that we have great choices. Now, not all choices are great choices and that's where oversight comes in, right? And we certainly have to be mindful of that because tax dollars pay for those choices. But I think, you know, again, this is a great example of why choice is so important. Because if not for choice, this great school would not be here, so.
Thank you.
Lastly, we'd like to ask some questions regarding budgeting and CCPS. So how do you think the board should support all schools in CCPS regarding safety and security?
So yes, so I would say this, it is incumbent on CCPS to make sure that every school, and it's my understanding that that's the case. And thank goodness for our governor because he ensured it as well in legislation, that every school would have law enforcement presence. So yes, it's very important. So this is what I say to anyone that likes to have the argument about choice. Collier County has very distinct lines. If you look on the map of the state of Florida, every student that lives in Collier County, there are kids. Why wouldn't we want the same thing for those kids as we want for, for example, my own, who attends Gulf Coast High School? So that's what I would, that's what I would say in terms of making sure that all students are safe regardless of where they attend.
What experience do you have with complicated budgets? When you're given a budget for a district, what would be your process to determine if it's a good budget for the system?
So I will say this, one of the most important things to know about budgeting is that government budgeting is very different than your personal finance budgeting. And as an example, so our budget is $1.387 billion. Our budget is a direct result of the revenue from property taxes that are collected. So as an example, Collier County, here in Collier, your property values went up by 30%. So guess what? We got more revenue. So this board was able to keep the same mileage rate. We didn't raise your taxes, we didn't raise your mileage at all. In fact, we approved a lower mileage. But because of the revenue increasing because your values went up, we brought in more money. Now, to me, and this is one of the things I love that the Florida Department of Education does, they track your dollars to the classroom as a percentage of the budget. So Collier right now is at 96.7% of money going to the classroom, which is excellent. And so very, very proud of that. But I would say, you know, you have your capital dollars, you have your operational dollars. It's really important to ask questions. We put a lot of really great information on our district website, including a video that we made, a homemade little cartoon video, to help explain to the layperson how we derive funding from the state. I think too, the other thing that's important to know is that if it's right for kids, if it's good for kids, that's great by me. But I do think there are ways to trim the budget and we've been able to do that. I think it's about taking a discerning eye, questioning every purchase. I mean, every year, we have a budget for teaching and learning. Every year, I ask for a return on investment analysis of each program that we use. So for example, Canvas is a big chunk of our budget, some of the technology. Those department leaders need to be able to defend that purchase. And so every year, they sit, the budget team sits with every individual department. They start from zero and they go line by line over last year's budget. And that person has to defend why they spent that money, what was the return on investment, why we need to spend it again. It's, it's, it's one of the tenants of zero-based budgeting without actually taking your savings account back to zero and starting from zero. And so I think that's really important. And of course transparency is even more important, just to build trust with the community so they understand why you're doing what you're doing. But I highly recommend going to our website and getting on the finance tab. There's some pretty great information. And if you're, you know, if you're a taxpaying citizen here in Collier, you are, your parents are supporting public education in Collier. So it's important to know what exactly you're supporting, right?
And would you say that when you're looking over a budget for the system, what important like programs or services are you looking for that you feel should be included or already included in the budget that support our schools?
So I will say this, we, every month during the board meeting, we get a consent agenda. And there are, sometimes there are 50 items, sometimes there are 250 items. Okay, and so what we have is an executive summary of each item, so you know exactly what the purpose of that expenditure is. The thing that we have asked them to do, they recently started doing here in the last year, is also go back and show us what the last year's executive summary looked like for this same item. So if we're re-upping the same purchase or the same service, what was the cost last year so we can have an idea of how much it's gone up? And maybe it's time to put that out for bid again if it's gone up that much, type of thing. You know what I mean? And so I think obviously the most important thing are things that impact the safety of our facilities and the educational materials that we purchase that obviously impact your learning experience.
Of course. You previously mentioned some of our struggles with retaining teachers, which brings me to the question, what are the main issues that you believe are hurting teacher retention? And how would you plan to combat these issues?
So one of the things I've tried, I think one of the biggest issues here in Collier is the lack of trust of educators and some of the political, I would call disinformation that's been put out there about our school system. It's disheartening to our teachers because they're pouring their heart and soul every day into what they do. And to be accused of, we've heard many of our teachers, you see it on social media, they're accusing them of grooming, of pushing an LGBTQ agenda. It's not happening. They're being accused of disseminating critical race theory and other materials. It's not happening. By the way, we have policies in place to deal with employees who cross a line and break policies. And so the key is when you are made aware of that happening, you absolutely have to act. So many teachers are being sort of lumped in. We've seen some crazy headlines around the country. Some crazy things have been happening in education, don't get me wrong. It does happen, it's not happening here. If it does, policies in place to handle it. So I think it's one of the biggest issues is teachers feeling attacked. They're thinking, why am I subjecting myself like to this? You know, it's certainly not the money, right? And it just feels like a slap in the face to a lot of teachers. So I think that's a big issue. I think certainly not anyone at this table, but I think student discipline is an issue. I think as a district, we could do a better job of getting tougher on policies around discipline. But I think that, you know, it's important to have that parent-school partnership. And we need parents to hold their kids accountable at home because we can't be the only ones holding them accountable. And so it's very difficult. And I think teachers are, you know, they're maxed out when they have to deal with disrespect and that type of thing in the classroom. And then of course, I think the issue specific to Collier, it's expensive to live here, you know? And so it's like, okay, is this, you know, is this worth it? And just the overall pay. And by the way, we have the second highest paid teachers in the state. Still not enough. Still not enough, so.
Alright, thank you. Well, those are all the questions that we prepared for you. However, is there anything that we'd like to add or that you feel we missed?
I don't think so. You ask such thoughtful questions. I should be surprised because you all seem like wonderful kids. Young adults, I should say. No, and I would Um, no, and I, I would love for you to come to a board meeting, um, because I think you are what's great about my job. You know, this is, this is the best part of my job, is interacting with kids. Um, and I'd love to come for an event if you, you know, when you have your theater, you're doing a game, you know, whether it's, you know, you got basketball coming up, you got soccer coming up, that type of thing.
Newfield.
Newfield. Yeah, I did, I saw your facility. It's amazing. Um, you have such a great soccer program, so I'm not surprised. Um, but I, but I truly would love to support, um, as I told you, um, I have some friends whose children attend here. Um, this is really a fabulous facility, but really great young adults, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Appreciate it. Kids come to a board meeting anytime. We need, we need young people to get involved. We need young people to, to voice, you know, their experience. Um, and it can be good or bad. Listen, I can, I can take it. I've gotten beaten up over, over the last four years, so I feel like I'm Teflon. But, um, but yeah, listen, don't, you know, whether it's good or bad, if you have an issue, get involved, whether it's school board, whether it's county commission. Um, you have something to say. Forums, right? You have something to say. Exactly what you did here is huge. I mean, our local newspapers are not even doing this. The questions that were asked here today were such high level. I attended forums where these questions were not asked. You know, they were, they were waiting off into the social, you know, uh, the wedge issues. So thank you so much. I'm beyond impressed and I would love to come back anytime, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Sweeney has my email, so reach out anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I can take this?
Yes, yes, the board.
I'm gonna go back and brag.
We actually got about seven thousand last year. We didn't need seven thousand. We only needed about five hundred, so.
Pretty awesome. Um, you know what? I'm trying to think. I'll take a stack back to the district if you, do you think you want us to get rid of that?
That would be awesome.
I'm gonna go back and brag on you. Can I get a picture of you? Is that okay if I tweet it out?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
I'd love to get a picture.
Are you gonna be at the, I'm assuming you're gonna be at the forum tomorrow?
I am. Are you gonna be there?
Yeah, I'm actually worth it. A coastal breeze.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, so do you know Dr. Westbury from there?
Yeah.
And you probably, some of you had her for a principal, right?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Awesome, she's a girlie. She's so sweet. Can I get you, can I get your picture?
Of course.
Do you, where do you guys wanna, is there a sign, something? Is there something outside the room?
There might.
Sign.
In terms of space, it would be better outside.
We could do it over the balcony, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm gonna, I can't wait to tell my daughter what a slacker she is.